All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, December 2, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I will call the meeting into order. The first item of business, as always, is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. This evening, we have Pastor Ronnie Cully of Christian Home Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be in your presence, and we want to tell you that we love you. We thank you for your providence and your blessings over all our lives. As we pray, Father God, at the opening of this meeting, we thank you for each and every commissioner. We thank you, Father God, for their faithfulness and willingness to serve, Father God. We thank you for the wisdom and the knowledge that you give them to make sound decisions that will bless the constituents of this county and, most importantly, will give you glory. Continue to bless their families. God bless everything that they set their hands to do. And, Lord, let them not worry about anything because you will take care of them as they take care of your business. We give you glory and honor and praise for them and especially for you. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. All right. We have something a little different this evening as we're springing on new members to the board, and we have outgoing members. The previous, this board must approve its amendments and can have a motion to approve our amendments.
Come on, come on.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. And now, the next item of business is board recognition and presentation to the outgoing commissioners, and then we'll have the oaths of office of our newly elected members.
I'll take her from here.
You got them all.
What do we got to do?
Yeah.
We marching by?
If you pass one down, we'll pass it.
Come up front.
Go up front.
You got a chance, Paul.
Well, we want to give a fond farewell to our outgoing commissioners. This is the only board I've known, and it's with a heavy heart that I do this. So we're going to present gifts to the outgoing commissioners before we swear in the new one. The first one I'll present is to our chairman, Bob White. Bob, you have led us through some changes. You've led us through some good times and some stressful times, but we appreciate all that you've done for this county. So, thank you. And to our outgoing commissioner, Mr. Paul Beaumont. We appreciate your service. You've been on the board for a while. You came in in a similar situation as an appointment and then won your elections outright. So we appreciate the time and all that you've done for this county. And finally, to my friend Kitty. I'll miss you. I love you. And that's all I'm going to be able to say right now. So, thank you.
Now, we have a transition.
We have to bring Mr. Raymond Fusco up and the new incoming board member.
It's Kitty.
Take the oath of office.
I appreciate it.
Second pulse back there.
Flavoring the freedom.
I think you move it a little slow there, Mike.
I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for inviting me out to do this. It's a true honor, and I really appreciate it, and I really enjoy doing this. Thank you so much. So, I go by the order of ladies first. So, we'll do Selena Jarvis first. If you want to bring some folks up.
She's going to hold the Bible for her.
All right. So, you'll get Miss Kitty on this side. Yep. You'll put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you, Selena Jarvis, solemnly and sincerely swear that you'll support the Constitution of the United States and that you be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you'll endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I do.
And do you further swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of your office of Currituck County Commissioner according to the best of your skill and ability and according to law, so help you God? Congratulations. Janet Rose, if you want to bring your family up and introduce them, we'd love to.
Tyler and Abby.
Someone pull my Bible up there. Yes. There you go. All right. Do you, Janet Rose, solemnly and sincerely swear that you'll support the Constitution of the United States and that you'll be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you'll endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your abilities, so help you God?
I do.
And do you further well and truly swear that you will execute the duties of your office of Currituck County Commissioner according to the best of your skill and ability and according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations.
Yeah, two of my daughters are here.
Come on up and hold the Bible for them.
You're officially your mom.
I don't know where you went.
Yep. Okay. So, you must have the ladies on this side.
Sit down.
Commissioner over here. Y'all want to hold the Bible for him. Place your left hand. All right. Do you, Paul O'Neill, solemnly and sincerely swear that you'll support the Constitution of the United States and that you'll be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you'll endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I do.
And do you further swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Currituck County Commissioner according to the best of your skill and ability and according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations. And Tony Angel.
Kids to come up?
No, they don't want to.
They don't want to. Okay.
Last time I did this, it cost me five years.
Promise I'm not swearing you back in the room. Do you, Tony Angel, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and that you be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you'll endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I do.
And do you further swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of your office as a Currituck County Commissioner according to the best of your skill and ability and according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations.
All right. Well, congratulations, commissioners. So, in accordance with North Carolina general statute, on the first Monday in December in every even year, the Board of Commissioners shall adopt a, or, excuse me, appoint a chair and a vice chair for the ensuing year. So, I will now open the floor for nominations for the position of chair. This county manager, I would like to nominate Mr. Paul O'Neill to be chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Very good. So, we have a nomination on the floor. Are there any other nominations for the position of chair?
Move the nominations. Be closed.
Second. Thank you. All right. So, I have a motion on the floor. Can I have a motion for Mr. O'Neill as the chair?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Congratulations.
Oh, you don't have to move.
Congratulations, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you. So, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the board. This time, it's time to elect our vice chairman, and we will take nominations from the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Chairman, or Commissioner Selena Jarvis to act as the vice chair.
And I'd like to second that. I guess I got to keep going, don't I?
Yeah.
So, is there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations and ask the board, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to take a short recess so that we can reconvene with our computers and hopefully move the meeting forward.
Seats or anything, yeah.
This time, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Next on the agenda is the Ethics Awareness and Conflict of Interest Reminder. Madam Attorney, could you read that for us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
I think I disclosed it previously when the Morris family had something on the agenda. I worked there 35 years ago, but I don't see it being a conflict. So, I just wanted to disclose it all.
Okay, all good. All right. If that's everything, we'll go to public comment.
Approval of the agenda.
Oh, approval of agenda. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion for approval of agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the agenda. Any further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Now, we'll go to public comment. From my understanding, public comment is still three minutes, and at 2:30, the light comes up, and then when the red light comes up, that's the end of the three minutes, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. We have six people signed up. First one is Ms. Barbara Snowden. I ask that you please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Barbara Snowden, and I live at 154 Courthouse Road. First thing, congratulations on the start of a new term. I hope it will be very successful, and you'll see a lot of improvement and things going good for Currituck County. Now, I want to talk to the past for just a minute. The previous board passed a resolution for the establishment of the NC 250. We're getting ready to start a 10-year period of celebrating the Declaration of Independence, the American Revolution, the Constitution, and finally, the Bill of Rights. The reason I'm here tonight is because I want to make you aware and the citizens who are listening tonight of an opportunity. Next Monday night, which is your night off on Monday, you have, we have a meeting at the Currituck Extension Department. The Historical Society has taken on the job of doing some of the research and some of the educational part of the North Carolina 250. The program will be on the Battle of Great Bridge. I don't know if any of you knew that there was a Battle of Great Bridge, but it is the closest American Revolutionary battle to us. According to the pension records of 1800, there were 108 North Carolina soldiers who got a pension based on fighting in the Battle of Great Bridge. That's not all of them, but of those 108, 20% of them were from Currituck County. And not only just Currituck County, but the 17 counties that make up northeastern North Carolina have at least two to three soldiers who got a pension for fighting at the Battle of Great Bridge. If you don't know about the Battle of Great Bridge, I would like to invite you to come to the meeting at 7:00. We have two speakers. Both of them are retired military, and both of them were professors at the Staff College in Norfolk. If you're not familiar with the Staff College, that is the college for officers in all the armed services where they learn how battles were fought, and they learned why they were important. And two of those retired professors will be presenting the information about the Battle of Great Bridge. I hope it is open to the public, and I would love to see any and everyone there learn about that particular battle. As I said, it's the closest one we have. It's tied to Betsy Doughty, and it's tied to our history, which is a very long and, I think, a very one to be proud of. Are there any questions?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Snowden, what time does it start again?
7:00.
7:00 PM at the Extension Building.
At the Extension Department.
Thank you. Ms. Snowden, I'd just like to tell you there, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We do have a meeting in Knott's Island on Monday, the 9th for the bridge for Corey's Ditch. I know I'm, so like I said, if that gets over, you know, you might see me after, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. I know some of the commissioners will probably be at that, so we're not trying to not attend.
Okay. Well, I hope you can come afterwards, and I'm glad you didn't say you were my favorite student this time.
Well, they already knew it. So, no, it was me. I had her twice. So, two different classes. It was me.
I had her for drama. That's okay.
Sorry about that.
You started it when we all know I was your favorite student.
As I hobble out of here, being such an ancient person, I hope to see y'all at the Extension Department and at all the other events that happened for the North Carolina 250.
Is it going to be recorded or anything?
No, we aren't, but I will be glad to see if I cannot make arrangements to do that. And just in case, I brought my notes if y'all wanted to know who the Currituck people were. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Snowden. Oh, and you weren't one of them.
Next, we have James Memes. Ask you please state your name and address for the record, sir.
James Memes, 105 Chestnut. Now, this is for the prior board members that were here. Unfortunately, you got to hear it now. Good evening. I hope as one board steps away and new individuals step into this realm, you realize the wrong steps that have been taken by some individuals over the years. You cannot tell me the wheels of government turn slow, that you lack the tools necessary to provide responsible growth because of the state, or that we, the people, wanted what is now headed our way. The wheels of government did not turn slowly when a board member at a very next meeting attempted to silence the public and claim they can't hear what we have to say at a public hearing, like judges, when judges actually hear everything, to include sentencing letters, character letters, et cetera. You can't tell me the state has taken away your tools. You had the tools necessary and were provided an avenue to help by having a one-acre minimum lot size, and you denied it. And you continue to rezone even after stating that was a very problem with what's happening today. Now, again, look at this from my perspective. In the 11th hour, two weeks after the election, you're quote "counting the ballots to save the election." That's how I feel about the most recent density changes presented by the board and the changes to the land use plan in the 11th hour, two weeks later, and the end of your term. I hope this new board puts forward a true solution, does not pass the buck off on those leaving their seats or the state, and immediately engages in what is needed to preserve what this past board was supposed to preserve, traditional rural character. You have the tools. You know what the community wants, of at least Moayak wants, and you know what the solutions are. You may ask what I want. I want a rural character that is being driven into the ground. I don't want the rights of individuals taken away on their private properties. I've been here my entire life. You cannot tell me that by providing these densely populated communities that you're not changing the demographics, makeup, political motivations, and the crime rate of my community. You cannot tell me you care about private property rights, then as an individual vote to deny every single soul or farm. To be frank, you've destroyed what Moayak has been all my life. I'm not saying every home must be one acre, just like you don't tell them they have to be 15,000 square feet. You're telling them when they came here, it was a rural community. When you came, and the vision is to maintain that character. Believe it or not, I do not want to be here at these meetings. There's always something on the agenda that draws me out, but most of all, it pisses me off when I hear this board say, "Well, the experts went to school. They learned the job, and they showed up." Then, the community gets an expert here, and you tell me they're misleading us, but refuse to tell an engineer he's trying to mislead you week after week when he tries to tell me what's best for me. I feel ignored. Lastly, again, this isn't personal, and I do appreciate those who have the courage and commitment to step forward and run as a successful campaign and an opportunity to represent the people of Currituck. I do appreciate your listening to my gripes and complaints, and when I want to be here to support something on the agenda, I will when I see it. I have hope and faith you will do the right things. It's unfortunate the tools in the toolbag were not adequately used by all. We must do better. New board, please follow through with the responsible growth you told us you would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kitty Etheridge.
Hello. I'm Kitty Etheridge, 846 Shawboro Road in Shawboro. I would like to congratulate and thank our new board members for their upcoming service to Currituck County. Your new job will be rewarding as well as frustrating at times. I wish you great success as you determine the future of our great county. I hope you will listen to the constituents and do the will of the people. I do hope you can restore confidence and trust in the Board of Commissioners. After our last meeting, it was disheartening to hear the comments being made by the public as they were leaving the meeting. They felt like they had been betrayed and that government did not work for them. I too felt betrayed because I had been told that we did not need to set a one-acre lot size because we could control growth by not rezoning land. Yes, as a board, you asked for public input on the rezoning land in Moayak for appointments, and yes, they got their, we got that input. They emailed, they texted, they called, and they showed up for the meeting to voice their opposition. I had only one person email me that they were in favor of the rezoning, and that was former chairman Bob White's wife. With the overwhelming opposition to the rezoning, the board by a vote of four to three passed the rezoning. Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis and Payment, for listening to the people that you represent. And I don't want to hear that as soon as the rezoning was passed, a grocery store is now interested in coming to Moayak. Before the rezoning, David Messina had personally talked to me and said that he had talked to the grocery store chains and that they had not had any contact with anybody from developers to the county interested in getting more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Renee Etheridge.
Renee Etheridge, 109 Evergreen Drive, Moayak. I am the chairman of the Republican Party here in Currituck, and I'd like to welcome all the newly sworn-in commissioners and those that have been here, and just to let everyone know that we are here to support you and anything that you need. And Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Etheridge.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Snowden.
It's a little chilly outside.
Just a little.
Thought I dressed appropriately. I don't have a thick enough coat to carry me through 30-degree temperatures. John Snowden, 112 Maple Road. Farmer John to a lot of people. I grow food and flowers. I don't grow apartments, and I don't grow houses. I can't say more than what Mr. Memes or former Commissioner Etheridge has said. You had, the former board had the tools. Rezoning is a political decision. Chairman O'Neill, you remember that from John Morrison being the county attorney. It's a political decision. We can sit there as the Board of Commissioners and go, "Those apartments aren't going to bring us anything other than field schools. More fire EMS requirements for protection. They don't pay any taxes." We can deny that. Just remember that. You can deny rezonings. That's where you draw the line. Once it's rezoned, and in this case, it was a developer coming forward with the rezoning. It wasn't a farmer asking to have their land rezoned. This was a developer. The other thing I want to remind you of is I'm the former publisher of the newspaper in Currituck. From 2001 to 2010, I published a weekly newspaper that had more readership in Currituck than the Virginia Pilot, the Daily Advance, and the Cosson Times. I started that from scratch. I did not have a business directory. I rode around, taught to businesses, and I have the distinction of being the longest published newspaper in Currituck. I also have the distinction of being the only newspaper publisher in northeastern North Carolina to catch a county in two violations of public meeting law. And what I want to remind all of you is, you are to advertise your meetings properly. If they're closed meetings, you are to keep minutes so that a person who was not in attendance can understand what went on. Closed session meetings are not protected forever and ever and ever. Red light flashing. It is a judge's order. You function under a consent agreement with me. James Johnson had a consent agreement with you guys over the zoning at the beach. So, now, if there is a violation, and I will be watching, you will be in contempt of Judge Richard Parker's order if you're found in violation. Announce your meetings, advertise them properly, keep the minutes. If any of you are sitting in a meeting and you feel that something's not right, you can talk to your attorney. I believe I've talked to the attorney about this and let her know. If you want to research it, go to the clerk's office. It is John Snowden, The Independent versus Currituck County. I'm two, and the county's zero. Let's not make it three and oh. Thank you.
Thank you for the pep talk, Mr. Snowden. Next, we have Denise Hall.
Denise Hall, 121 Brumsey Landing Drive, Moayak, North Carolina. Welcome, new board members. You got your work cut out for you, and thank you for your service. I can only echo what Ms. Etheridge said. People came in droves at the last meeting and spoke against the rezoning issue. I have always been told by, in fact, commissioners-- I have always been told by, in fact, Commissioner Etheridge, that rezoning is a political issue. You don't have to rezone. When you pointed out, Ms. Jarvis, that that little 21 acres now has 11.4 dwellings per acre, is that what you have envisioned for, is that what y'all envisioned for Currituck County? And I want to thank you, Ms. Jarvis, you Mr. Payment, and Ms. Etheridge for voting in the interests of the county and the citizens. I hope this board, I hope and pray that this board will do better and listen. When people walk out of here, they take their time to come to these meetings, and then they walk out and go, nobody listens to us. That's sad, and I hope that the new board will do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. That's all I had signed up. Is there anyone that didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Please come forward. Give us your name and address, please.
Steve Hedrick, 296 Summer Farms Trail here in Moayak. Welcome, new commissioners. As my constituents have said, you have your tasks cut out for you. Actually, what I'm going to bring to you tonight is something completely different. Last year, I stood before the previous board on Fire EMS Week, and I brought up discussion on hoping to find some money in your budget to elevate our 911 communicators to first responder status. 25 counties in North Carolina have done such through resolution, but you'll be seeing me again on the subject. But I want to put that out there for you right now. These are things I think we should take a hard look at. Our telecommunications folks, they are your first responder, right? They are the ones who buy the time for your police EMS fire to get where they need to be. They buy that time for others to function. So I think we should take a hard look at what they actually provide and elevate to them that first responder status so they can take advantage of the first responder benefits that are available. I did just a quick and impromptu Google, home buyers, first-time home buyer loans, obviously mental health services, various discounts, you know, so on and so forth. But as again, you'll be talking about your budget here soon enough, and I for one would like to see that be brought to the forefront and be county number 26. And if you, my next time here, I'll actually bring you a stack from every county who's done it, and you can just pick one and change the name Currituck, and it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that's all I have for public comment. Pass that down. Next on the agenda is commissioners' report. Start down here to the left with Ms. Rose, if you have anything. You're not obligated.
Well, obviously, I've not done any commissioner work because I just got sworn in, but I am looking forward to working with each of you and for the good of our citizens in Currituck County. And I do just want to bring up one thing. Over the course of the election, there was a lot of talk about more communication between the schools and the commissioners. And so I think something that would be very valuable for us is, you know, experience is the best teacher. So I would like to encourage you all to go visit the schools, whether it be a chorus concert, a band concert, a football game, basketball game. Go be a reading buddy at one of the schools and get into the schools and talk to the students and the faculty.
No, keep it. Ooh.
And then, I think you will see more than just spending an hour a couple times a year. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Payment?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate a couple things. It was spoken about first responders in your fire department, so please, you know, your volunteer fire departments are always looking for help. I say that all the time. You can get involved, they give free training. And if you just want to stand out there and hold a flag or help out with anything, they'll be thankful for that. And we lost a member recently. Donald Farabee passed away, but he was really involved with the volunteer fire departments and especially lower Currituck. You'd always see him out there responding. He wasn't actively fighting fires or anything anymore, but he was out there helping direct traffic control, traffic control, and he was a good guy. It was, they had a big, and I'm sure it'll be spoken about some more, but Mr. McCord down there, but he's someone who missed in the county, did a lot for the county. And the next, just remember, there is another, Auburn Regional Health, the Health Department over here does have nurse practitioners, and you can take a sick call there. They'll take any insurance. If you don't have insurance, they'll do a payment plan, but you can get your vaccinations, you can get physicals, you can get referrals, you can get X-ray referrals, you can get prescriptions. I mean, it's just like going to a regular doctor's office. So please take advantage of that. They're, you know, the walk-ins have increased, and so just remember, we do have that resource in the county here. And lastly, don't forget, and I'm sure Commissioner McCord will talk about that as well, the parade coming up this Friday night is going to be cold, but I think some of the commissioners will be riding in there, too. So anyways, that should be, that should be fun and interesting. Other than that, everyone, I want to wish the new commissioners welcome aboard. It's going to be exciting. We've got a lot of hard work ahead of us, and I think this board's always, you know, we've had our disagreements, but we've always worked hard. Everybody's input is important, good, bad, indifferent, for, against, whatever, but it all means something when we have our discussions. So please, you know, speak your mind and again, welcome aboard. Thank you. That's all, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Etheridge?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd like to personally thank Commissioner Paul Beaumont, Bob White, and Kitty Etheridge for their service. I've had the pleasure of serving with them for several years and always found that their hearts were in the right places, though we didn't always agree. But their goal was always what was best for the county. I'd like to welcome Tony, Janet, and Selena back to the board and look forward to working with them. And as we work together to move this county forward, we're going to do it. And also Commissioner O'Neill. What was I going to leave you at?
Oh, okay. I was going to give you two dibs.
Yeah. I was going to say Paul's going to give you. I wasn't going to leave you at it.
Put you on your toes.
Just see if you're awake.
I was awake.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
That it? Thank you.
And Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yeah. Mr. McCord?
All right. We stopped, the previous board, we stopped, watch me, the citizens get three minutes, I get three minutes. So we started. You get one. Donald Farabee started a true volunteer in Currituck County. He started volunteering as a fireman, volunteer fireman, and did EMS as well for Station 5 in Grandy since 1973. I was born in 74, so before I was even born. I met Donald when I was about 18. I attended his service yesterday. The fire department in Grandy, Station 5, did a great job representing him. They had some people speak as well. It was a very, very nice service, strongly attended. The Currituck Middle School was packed. So I'm glad Mr., or James's dad's retired fire marshal, and if James is still here because we might have had a violation or something, there were so many people there. But it was a very nice service. And like I said, 50-plus years the man volunteered in Currituck County. That's a volunteer, true, and he'll be missed. He's already missed. Prayers for his family. On a positive note, the Christmas parade is, I got all the floats, all the names and stuff, and we got a monster truck this year. I'm so excited. I've been trying to get Dennis Anderson to put a monster truck in the Christmas parade, and I think I got two or three this year. So it's going to be huge. It's going to be a good time. It's free, unless you want to buy food. Food's never free anywhere. But the parade is free for everybody. Please attend, get there. The parade starts at 7:00. The 6 o'clock is the Christmas tree light, and the trees were delivered yesterday evening. Beautiful Christmas tree. The YMCA got one, too. We got them a good rate on one as well. So if you're a member of the Y, which they paid for it, not taxpayers, let me put that out there. So the county did pay for the tree, but the parade is free. So please attend, bring kids, there's tons of stuff. There's, if you want to eat dinner, there's food trucks there as well. I'd like to thank Ms. Kitty Etheridge. Selena, you're still here, so I can't thank you because you still happen to be here. Commissioner Beaumont, as well as Commissioner Bob White. I've argued with all three of them, but I respect all three of them. Me and Ms. Kitty, we haven't argued in 2024, so I'm not, that's like a stat, so I'm pretty proud of myself for that one. But they, like I said, this job is beyond, there's like thankless, and then there's a few miles down the road is this job. So, but it takes a special type of person to take a beating, your family takes a beating, don't believe everything on social media. Somebody said my wife drives a brand-new car. I was like, her car is like six or seven years old. And then somebody said that I had a Range Rover on Facebook, which it's tax value, I think, is $2,100, it's so old, and it doesn't run. So, but like I said, not everything on Facebook's true. But I thank those three for their service. Ms. Kitty did eight years, Beaumont did 10, and Commissioner White did eight. So kudos to those three for their service. Thank God I have two left. Welcome the new board members and welcome Selena, our vice chair back, Jarvis, as well as, I was a commissioner with Paul O'Neill previously in 2013, or 12 and 13, I guess. And welcome Tony. Me and Tony knew like 500 of the same people and didn't know each other. So we found that out during all the stuff. But like I said, we got good guys, good people, guys and gals, as well as Commissioner Janet Rose. I served on a board with Janet on the school board, or the Parks and Rec Board, and we argued over participation trophies and other things, but we always hashed it out, and we're still friends 10 years later, so we must have done something right. She did bring up one thing, and I have stressed this, and I do think it's important, and I see our superintendent sitting there, I might go a little bit over, but the, I think we do need to have quarterly meetings, as Mr. Snowden said, and advertise them with the board, because if we don't, then six months from now, the school board says, hey, we got to have this. In fairness to them, as well as us, as well as the taxpayer, we need to have meetings, or if it's just by annual instead of once a year, all boards together know where the money, this, that, what they need, because things happen, and we need to be smart with the dollar. So that's my two cents on that. And the last thing, the first responder thing that Steve Hedrick mentioned, I have mad respect. Commissioner Etheridge's wife, Renee, is out there. We have some of the best dispatchers around. I've called other agencies. When you call the dispatch and you need a supervisor to call, and you call ours, they're so personable, they're knowledgeable, they're helpful, they've delivered babies over the phone, they've helped in mental illness situations. Our people are the best of the best, and I'm proud of them, as well as our other first responders. Merry Christmas. Please attend the parade. The food is not free, so if you're getting food, you have to pay for it, but the parade is going to be awesome. And I went over, but I just won't talk at the next meeting.
Okay. Mark that, anybody got that?
Yeah, break that down. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Angel?
So first off, thank you to the outgoing commissioners, Ms. Etheridge, Mr. White, Mr. Beaumont. To the oncoming board members, looking really forward to, really looking forward to working with you. One of the big things that I took away from this whole election process was getting out there, getting back to the community and listening to what folks say. I look forward, and I hope that we can work out some sort of schedule to have some open hall, or some town hall type events, not public comment necessarily, but open discussion, roundtable, and looking for some solutions that way to get the public involved, get their buy-in, and hopefully put us back on the right track. Other than that, looking forward to the Christmas parade, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Congratulations, everybody. Back to you.
Thank you. Ms. Jarvis?
Thank you. First of all, I'll do commissioner business. I had the opportunity to go with our county manager, Rebecca Gay, to the Albemarle Regional Health Services round, business stakeholder roundtable on November 19th. We heard an annual review of their budget, the mini programs that they have, and the partnerships that they help facilitate. And the meeting was very informative, and I just want to thank Commissioner Payment for allowing me to take his seat and learn more about this valuable partnership that we have with our county and our regional, region. I really learned a lot, so thank you for that opportunity. Next, welcome to Tony and to Janet, and of course, Paul coming back. I really think we are going to move this county forward in a positive direction. I'm very excited about the potentials that I see with us working together, working to build trust, working to build confidence back into the board. And to Paul and Bob, I wish them the best in their next endeavors, whatever that is. It'll be strange not having them up here because this is the only board I'd ever known until tonight, since being sworn in, since 2019. And finally, I just want to say to Kitty, I will miss you greatly. I'm thankful for your guidance. You're the one that got me in this. Back in 2002, I was just a teacher, a civics teacher and an AP government teacher, and I asked her to come talk about election law, and Kitty being Kitty said, well, there's a catch, and if you, if I come speak, you have to volunteer for the elections. And that began a 22-year friendship that I wouldn't give the world for. When I considered the appointment for this job, I met with Kitty and she talked me into it. She painted a really rose-colored picture.
Oh, boy.
You're still friends?
We are, and I do still wear those rose-colored glasses, and I will try to keep those on. But when I think of you, Kitty, I can't help but have rose-colored glasses, and I cherish our time, our conferences, and the good we've done from those conferences, the information and the zest we bring back from those conferences. And I promise you, I will keep listening to the people and I will make you proud. I promise. I love you and I respect you. And finally, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. Of course, I want to thank the outgoing commissioners for the years of service. Congratulate Ms. Jarvis and Mr. Angel and Ms. Rose, and to Owen and Kevin and Mike and staff, I look forward to working with y'all. We are going to have some ambitious things that we're going to do. We've talked about a lot of things during the campaign. We are going to be out in the community. We're going to have some community meetings in the lower part of the county, the northern part of the county, on the Outer Banks and Knott's Island. We'll be scheduling those in the next month or so so that we can get out. We want to hear from the public, but I do want the public to understand that because you've been speaking for however long about certain things doesn't mean that it's just going to flip overnight. You've got to give us a little grace, you've got to give us a little time to work through these issues. We have new commissioners that have never served on the Board of Commissioners. You have a rusty old man that hasn't been here for a long time, and you've just got to give us a little grace, give us a little time to work through some things, and we're going to make some changes that over time, we hope you'll be happy with, but we have to get out and hear from the whole public, not just, you know, the people that take their time to come up here. We need to go out into the public and get back into the type of relationship with our constituents where they trust us and we can trust that they're going to support us when we're making tough decisions. Another thing is to those that are out there and have projects, and I ask you to give us some grace on rezonings because I don't think they're going to be met with open arms at this current time. So I would just ask for you also to give us some grace and let us work through some things. And finally, one thing that I would like for this board to do is figure out how to open these county offices back up to the public. We are, we are the only county I know of where you can't get into a county office. And I know during COVID, there was things, and I know there was other reasons, but I want us to have a serious discussion about how to open the county offices back up. I don't care if there's a metal detector or whatever people have to walk through. It works fine over at the other courthouse. You walk in, you walk through the metal detector and go about your business. But the taxpayers that want to speak with the people that they pay the salaries, they can't get in here, and we've got to figure that out. So that's my one thing I would like to throw out there tonight, and I'll ask the county manager to work with us and the commissioners with Kevin being in Sheriff's Department to help us figure out a way that we can open the county offices back up to the public. And with that, that's all the comment I have for tonight, and we'll go to Ms. Gay's report, county manager's report.
No report this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
That was a great report this evening. How about the county attorney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The candidate for seat six for the North Carolina Supreme Court filed an elections protest in pretty much, I think, every county in our state, including Currituck County. And I also represent the Board of Elections. And I also represent the Board of Elections, so I walked them through the process. And they held a preliminary hearing on November 21st, and we had the full hearing this morning in this room. And the, the protest was challenging actually one voter in Currituck County, the eligibility of that voter. And the Board of Elections found, um, that he was eligible to vote. And that will be sent off to the State Board of Elections and, and they will take it from there.
All right. Anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may add, I talked to her this morning for a while, and the guy lived in the county for over a decade. And I guess it was regarding a P.O. box. He had something shipped. If you have something shipped and it's a package too big and you're not home, it was shipped to like a company, and that's why they were challenging that guy. And he'd lived here for over a decade.
Truth is stranger than fiction.
Yes, it is.
Uh, next, we'll move to administrative reports. And I understand we have the Macon County Director of Social Services, Patrick Betancourt. Did I say it right?
You did, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right.
Thank you for, uh, allowing me some time this evening. A little bit of a drive up here. If you don't mind, I'm going to speak from some notes.
How about introducing yourself for us?
Sure.
And what we're discussing. All I've got is administrative report.
Not a problem at all.
Okay.
Commissioners, my name is Patrick Betancourt, and I serve as the Director of Social Services in Macon County. Macon County lies about an hour and a half west of Asheville. And so, just to kind of give you a little bit of explanation of why I've asked to speak before you tonight. On behalf of my Social Services Board and myself, I've come to Currituck County tonight to express our most sincere thank you to you, your Social Services Director Samantha Hurd and her staff for their assistance to Macon, Macon County during Hurricane Helene. While Macon County was mostly spared from the horrific damage that counties just east of us experienced, we nonetheless were asked to stand up our very first ever D-Snap operation in the agency's history. As you might imagine, with any of the first-time endeavors, the staff and I were a little anxious as to the unknowns that a D-Snap operations would bring. We, of course, had several conversations and discussions with North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services about the process of standing up disaster, uh, food stamps. But it wasn't until Samantha Hurd and her, and her staff reached out to me directly, and I might add, without being asked to do so, that I began to feel some confidence with pulling this endeavor off. Samantha and her staff volunteered, again, without having been asked, to help my staff key D-Snap applications and help us with some of the logistics regarding how to run a D-Snap operation. As importantly as the keying of those applications, Macon County, uh, was both the, we received both technical and practical guidance for a successful operation. It ranged from understanding the flow of operations to the importance of getting a strong interview, to the smallest details, such as double taping the card sticker to the application. Because if, you can believe this, the sticky, uh, amount on the back of the card sticker doesn't stick at all. So, so that we wouldn't lose that. Again, a very small but important detail. Samantha and her staff were there for us. There were a wealth of boots on the ground, been there, done that, no, no more T-shirts, thank you, kind of advice that we needed to run a successful operation. I might add that Currituck County staff assisted Macon County by keying more than 350 applications for us. And if I understand correctly, Currituck didn't just assist Macon County, but your Social Services staff generously assisted other impacted counties in western North Carolina as well. So on behalf of the staff, myself, and our county leadership, I'd like to offer a small token of our appreciation, our sincere appreciation to Currituck County Department of, of Social Services, which will forever be our sister county on the coast. For everything.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners, if I may. I'm Samantha Hurd, Social Services Director for Currituck County. I would like to congratulate you on your new term of office, for those of you who are new or returning. And this was a tremendous surprise and honor for my colleague, Patrick Benningcourt, to travel here from Macon County. It was no problem at all to assist, uh, being a coastal community as we are in Currituck. It could be us at any time that needs the assistance. So what we did was simply to fulfill the mission and vision of our agency every day. Uh, Social Services exists exclusively to help people, whether it's Currituck County or Macon County. Primarily, we exist here in Currituck County to help our residents and our citizens, but also we have to help our neighbors. That is the charge. And whether they're right next door or they're far, far away in the West, I can't imagine, uh, what Patrick and his staff and the other, uh, 25 impacted western counties have experienced. May that never be us, and I, and I do hope and pray that they, uh, you know, seek restoration and make progress every single day as they go on. I want to thank you, Patrick, for this, and you are absolutely positively welcome. It was our honor to help you. I have a few of our key staff that helped with this, uh, project. Brandy, Kelly, Amber McKinney, and Kiara Hinson with us this evening. We want to thank you. There are several others that could not make it this evening for various reasons, but thank you for coming and thank you for traveling all this way. Thank you.
Mr. Betancourt, we really, really thank you for traveling that distance to come here tonight to do that. That's very special.
It was my pleasure, uh, Mr. Chairman, and, and again, uh, an express, uh, wish that I asked of our, uh, county leadership and our Social Services Board, just to say thank you.
And we've been praying for you guys out there in that part of the state. And, uh, I know that it's tough out there, but we, uh, certainly have been praying for you guys out there.
Thank you very much.
And I know that a lot of people have sent money and things out there. And I know that you, in particular, weren't hit, but we do care about our, uh, brothers and sisters out in the western part of the state. And thank you again.
Thank you very much for your hospitality, and thank you again for the assistance.
Yes, sir. And come anytime, come in the summer.
It's a little chilly right now, but I imagine the summer's a little bit nicer.
It's a little more chilly where you come from, I'm sure.
I think it's getting ready to be.
But come in the summer, and we'll welcome you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item is public hearings. PB 2424 Walton and Ginger Morris, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Four. Use standards to amend the retail sales from a vehicle standard as well as the general standards for temporary uses and structures.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. This is a request for an amendment to our Unified Development Ordinance, our zoning ordinance, uh, specifically related to, uh, retail sales from a vehicle as well as temporary use, um, standards. The applicants are Walton and Ginger Morris, and the representative, um, their son Chet, is here, um, this evening to represent the applicants. We'll start with the first section of the ordinance that is proposed to be changed. And this is in, uh, Section 4.3.3 of the ordinance, which is where the specific standards for certain accessory uses are found. And you can see here, the underlying language is language that's proposed to be added, and the strike-through language is language that's proposed to be removed. And then, um, if the text amendment is approved, then it will be renumbered accordingly as well. So you can see that the, the applicant is, uh, requesting changes to the retail sales from a vehicle standards, which sometimes are referred to as food truck standards. And in doing so, they wanted to carve out a, um, an exception for food trucks related to or on properties with, uh, farmers markets. They felt like it was a, um, unique use and that, that, um, ultimately what they'd like to do is keep vehicles located on a parcel, uh, overnight and not have to move the vehicles each day. So you can see that the current language requires that the vehicle and any other appurtenances are removed each day after the completion of sales. And the proposed language will carve out an exception to that for vehicles located on a parcel with a compliant farmer's market as the principal use, provided the vehicle is road-ready for driving or towing off-site, and the vehicle is not obstructed by any permanent features. And then they're proposing to strike through a number three here, that no permanent features are included as part of the use. It's my understanding that at the farmer's market at Morris Farm, there's actually a counter and a menu board and things like that that are used, um, in conjunction with the, the food truck and possibly with other, um, other uses as well, but specifically that's sometimes used for, uh, the food truck service. So that, that is the change that's proposed to this section of the ordinance. Any questions on that?
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you explain, um, what's meant by compliant and what that looks like? Compliant farmer's market?
A permitted farmer's market?
I have a question, too.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm wondering, you know, about other businesses. You know, first of all, I'm in favor of them not having to move every day, but I think of other businesses like Sanctuary Vineyard.
Sanctuary Vineyard? You know, they're not a farmer's market, but I know they have food trucks. I don't know that they stay there as long as they do at Morris or some of the other farm markets. I, I know of three farm markets that would benefit from this. But there are also some other businesses that have food trucks. I've seen some up at, uh, the Little Moyoc Shopping Center, Ms. Humphries. That, and I know when Joe Nathan's was there, they did have to move it every single day. So I just wonder why it's just the farm markets.
Well, firstly, it's their text amendment that they're sponsoring.
I see.
And also, this is something that's narrowly tailored for farm markets. And if you look through the staff report, you'll notice that there are several land use plan, plan policies that are related to this type of use. And farmer's markets also have some other, um, kind of special regs as, uh, related to the types of signage. And the reason being is because that's a use that we want to support and promote in the county. So that's one reason why, um, that language is narrowly tailored. I mean, also, you know, it, it's, they're really not permanent uses. They're, they're intended to be temporary.
Sure.
So having language that allows it to be at any business, uh, you know, could then become, um, you know, like it's additional business set up on a commercial properties without having, you know, the infrastructure in place. So that, that's another reason why.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? Anyone have any questions?
Now, let me, can I ask a question on what Jenny, what, or Ms. Turner, I should say, to be considered, to deem, obviously, like, I know Morris is a farmer's market. I know Powell's is a farmer's market. I know Moyoc Farm Market's a farmer, farmer's market. It's in the name. Is, what, what, what are the requirements for, you know, like you said, if you have a small, if somebody had a small mom and pop, we used to have a bunch of them on the south end, where they have a, a farmer's market. I mean, far as, I know these guys, the ones that we're naming, and I'm not, you know, against it or anything. They have access to restrooms and all that kind of stuff like they have. But I mean, with that, if, if we made this, which, and I know they're the ones bringing it forward, if we made this and this passed, um, are there going to be the requirements to, I guess I want to say, are there going to be requirements to the, if this is for all farmer's markets? A, what qualifies them as a farmer's market? And then B, will they have to have, I know the ones that I named have access to restrooms, running water, all that stuff. Is that an additional requirement they'd have to have?
I mean, I mean, they got the definition here of a farmer's market. You mean, and, and be addition to that?
No, 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 I'm just asking, like, say, somebody has a farmer's market. Somebody has one on, just in Grandy, on the south end, on the side of the road. They have two acres and they, or, I mean, you could say Grandy Greenhouse. I know they have restrooms, too, if they wanted to, to have it. I, like I said, I'm not against it. I just was curious, you know, are those, those additional requirements of running water, restrooms, which I know the businesses that we named all have that. Is that, is that us, or is that a Albemarle Regional Health?
Well, any, any, any food truck service is going to be required by Albemarle Regional Health to have.
They get inspected at the beginning and all that stuff.
Yeah, so that's going to be, that's going to be in addition to what this is, because if you pull a food truck on there, you got to have the sanitary portion of that.
It's got to be checked off and everything.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's not going to change Albemarle Regional Health.
What Ms. Turner said was, it's specific to bona fide farm markets, and there's a definition that tells you what a bona fide farm market is, and that's what it's tailored for. So if somebody has a farm market and meets the definition of the farm market, they would be able to do what this ordinance is allowing. If it does not meet the definition of a farm market, they would not be able to do this. So it's very tailored to the farm markets.
But it does open up some possibilities, and I'll use Taylors. They sell, they have a greenhouse, they sell plants, and they sell fertilizer. So that could be considered a farm market.
I will defer to the staff's definition.
Are you talking about Taylors, the retail store on the highway?
Yeah.
Ace Hardware.
Ace Hardware.
Your principal product has to be farming.
Farming.
Farming, not that's a sideshow or a side business at Christmas time, I would think.
Yeah, that doesn't seem to meet the definition of farmer's market. That would be more retail sales.
But you did say this text amendment was brought by the family. So if someone like Taylors or, um, another hardware store wanted to do something, they could try and do another text amendment.
They could, that's correct.
Yes.
That's correct.
All right. Any further? Yes?
I'm sorry, there's just another section of, of, of the ordinance here. And, um, so that was the first part pertaining to retail sales from a vehicle. And the second, um, proposed amendment is related to the, the general standards for temporary uses and structures. They would also like to strike E here, where it says that they, um, special events may not include permanent alterations to the site. They have, um, as you're aware, they, they do have some events each year. Several months ago, the ordinance was amended to allow for additional special events. It's 10 per year. And so they would like to make some improvements to the site, um, for, um, when they're using those, uh, having those special events. So they'd like that part of the ordinance removed as well.
Is there going to be specific items that they use regularly, or is this just carte blanche?
Well, it would have to, that's, it's a great question. It would need to still meet any kind of zoning regulations. So I know they had spoken about potentially building a platform.
Stage or something like that?
Yeah, like a platform. So that could be something they could potentially get permitted, because that in and of itself isn't really a use necessarily. It's used when they have special events. And so that's, that's that. And, um, the, these land use plan policies are in your staff report. These policies may apply to the request, uh, Land Use Goal Two, regarding, uh, carefully considering design and location of land uses. Land Use Goal Three, support new and existing commercial developments that adhere to quality, community appearance, and design standards. And there's a couple economic development goals that are directly related to tourism and agriculture, value-added agriculture. Economic Development Policy 3.1 is to support the continued operation of farm stands and farmer's markets and encourage the sale of local value-added products. And there is an implementation matrix action that is related, potentially, to review the ordinance and amend it to allow compatible farm-to-table restaurants, farm stands and markets, and agritourism enterprises at appropriate zoning districts. These are the text amendment review standards that the board may consider in determining whether to adopt, adopt or deny the proposed text amendment. Uh, these are in your agenda packet. And the planning staff, as well as the, uh, planning board, recommend approval subject to the consistency statement that the amendment is consistent with the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including Land Use Goals Two and Three, Economic Development Goals Two and Three, and Economic Development Policy 3.1. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
All right. Any other questions?
The, um, the striking, the, uh, like I said, I mean, I'm all for property rights. Somebody, they, I know they own hundreds of acres on their property. The, the striking of this, this is still falls under the same, the farmer's market, the whole thing, that's.
The first part had to do with farmer's markets.
This farmer's market, the second part.
The second part has to do with temporary uses and special events.
Which would be anybody that has special, you know, I'm saying, like, far as to get a permanent structure on their, on their property, correct?
Right, the, well, the property.
The property, okay.
So doesn't it boil down to if they're having 10 events a year, they can leave a stage up? Isn't that what we're looking at?
Yes.
Or a, what if they had a, like a storage building or something with stuff in there? I mean, is that?
Possibly, yeah.
Okay, yeah. On their property.
I don't think you need a text amendment to have a storage building, do you?
Well, no, no, but it depends on what it's being used for, so, possibly.
Okay. So.
They also mentioned, um, that it was a safety issue. They also mentioned that it was a safety issue to move it in the busy summer every day, and so I'm all for creating a safer environment for the people.
All right, any further questions? Uh, this is a public hearing, I have the sheet, no one has signed up. Is there anyone that wishes to speak that did not sign?
The applicant, the applicant want to speak?
Applicant.
The applicant?
Yes. If he wants to speak, sure.
The applicant want to come up and say anything?
This guy. Good evening, uh, Chet Morris, 106 Morris Landing Lane. I'm here on behalf of Walton and Ginger. Ms. Jenny and the planning department's really been with me on getting everything the way that it needs to be brought to everybody's attention, um, and fair for everybody else in the county. Food trucks, really number one reason for that, like you're saying, is safety. If they come in and out every day, we're having to hook and unhook the, uh, the gas lines, which is detrimental, pretty much, we've had like, I'd say, five or six leaks uh this year. The reason, you'll, you'll see a lot of food trucks have tanks on the front of their trucks, and that works for the one day of use. Uh, they are, like Coin Jack Catering, Mr. Joe's, they're with us Fri- Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, uh, breakfast, lunch, late lunch, uh, and they just don't have enough gas to be able to run that many days. Uh, so Blasman Gas, uh, they, they provide them with the gas and, uh, they are not, they're not open on the weekend. So pretty much, we've got to bring somebody else in to the market if we don't, uh, we can't have them. And they're the ones really that we trust, they're the best fit for us, and there's not a whole lot of trucks in the county. So pretty much, if they can't do it, we're having to go out of county, which is number one thing nobody really wants to do, is go out of county, get out of county trucks, even out of state trucks, uh, that are, uh, can pretty much put out as much food as, as we require, because we're so busy from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday, um, as well as the other farm markets. That's why it's not just us, it's everybody, just because I know we're not the only ones with the problem. Um, and then you just got the, the safety of bringing the trucks in there, uh, with all the people, patrons walking around, we've got kids playing on tractors, you're bringing in trailers, trucks, unhooking them, unhooking the gas, we, we provide power for them, so we don't have to run generators. So it's basically just you're building a, a food truck every day, uh, with a lot of customers there for, so based on that, uh, that's our biggest reason for that. Um, I can take any questions if you have.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So you're not proposing to bring any type of a, a gas stores tank in there, are you?
So what we do is Blasman, uh, provides a 200 gallon tank, two of them for us, for each, one for each truck, so they can make it throughout the whole weekend. Problem is, when me or my customers or the owner of the truck goes to unhook it, Blasman is no longer, uh, responsible or held liable.
There's no safety issues or compliances you have to follow?
There isn't, um, but what they tell us, because it's not like just hooking up a, a propane grill, you know, that's real easy, it's actual plumbing, needs tape, and even, even they have said the amount of pressure that comes out of those tanks, not blowing the, uh, regulators off, um, they can't believe that hasn't happened. Then we have people come in, you know, Saturday morning, um, to help fix things, somebody might put a regulator upside down, we've had that happen, then it fills up with water and we take it off-site and it rains, and it's, it's really become a mess. And I'm not a restaurant person, and they are more than qualified and, you know, up to our standards of the kind of food and cleanliness and the, uh, the structures that are on that for, says that you can't have any kind of permanent structure for your retail truck that comes in. It's just, uh, what we have is menu boards, shelving, that way, pretty much, we're in full control of the looks, the appearance of what we have, uh, coming on-site, as well as the sanitation versus getting a truck you don't know of in Virginia, and they come in, they plop up a couple eight-foot tables, put a little thing over top of it, and you're open for business, it's just not, you know, not what we're looking for.
Anyone have any other questions?
So the permanent features that you're talking about adding, that's just going to be like the truck will pull up back up, up to a spot to kind of facilitate service or?
Yeah, so what we have is, uh, we have underground, uh, power hookup for them, um, and we have propane that we have for them, and we've got to, to keep with fire standard, just got to be on a, a non-inflammable, you can't just put it on a pallet, so we've got it in a metal crate, so we can take the crate around with the forklift. And the structures that we have is basically, say, you take your counter right there, it's a walk-up counter, so they don't have to go to the truck, somebody hollering out of the truck, or they set up a tent and an eight-foot table in front of it, or something like that, it just looks more appealing to the, to the business, whether it be for a food truck, or if the food truck's not there, and we want a, somebody selling jewelry or something like that, they can have a table to work off of, and it looks like a good appearance.
Okay.
I, I just would like to comment, everything that they do out there is first class, it's professionally ran. If Chet's not on-site, his mom or dad are on-site, or his wife, they, they are true Currytuck hard-working, you know, like I said, they follow the rules, they do what they're supposed to do, and just, like I said, it's, a lot of citizens in this county enjoy their facilities. Um, I like it in the summertime when you can pull in there and get lunch. When I'm working for myself, I can come into service entrance and order food, and you pull out and you're back on the highway, snap of a finger, but they, um, like I said, you guys do a lot of good in the county, they do so much for the school systems, they do so much. Like I said, they're, they do a good job.
And, uh, thank you on that one. So we do field trips, pumpkin patch and all that kind of stuff. Um, so what we had a problem with this year, when we have Dare County come in, um, Shawboro, all these people, they have 100 kids and 100 parents. Well, because we've been in violation, we couldn't bring them in on one day to set these up. You got 100 parents there, it's easy to come in there for a food truck and make, you know, between $600 and $800. It's not feasible, however, for them to have to drive from the beach, set up shop, not knowing exactly how many parents we have coming. It's not like, you, you know, we tell them we have 100 parents, we can just say, normally it's 100 parents, but if they make all that effort to come, and then it's election day or something, and all the parents are doing that, you know, then they've lost money. So versus if they're on-site, they come in, they're, they've got everything already prepped and clean, they turn on the fryers, anybody that's there on-site, you know, has, has lunch, and they've been really appreciative of that and missed that this year.
Any other questions? With that, I will now open the public hearing. We have no one that has signed up. Is there anyone that wishes to speak that didn't sign up? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Ms. Chairman, I'm going to move to approve PB 2424 Walton and Ginger Morris text amendment because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currytuck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goals two and three, economic development goals two, three, and economic development policy 3.1.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, next agenda item is PB 24 dash 21 Imagine Currytuck 2040 Vision Plan, request for a land use plan amendment to adjust allowable densities on the mainland and revise the future land use map for the Currytuck Station area. The proposed amendments include reclassifying 1,032 acres from G3 to O3, 599 acres from G3 to G2, and 796 acres from G3 to G1. These changes affect properties located near South Mills Road and Northwest Backwoods Road, specifically Tax Map 3, Parcel 1B, Tax Map 5, Parcels 10, 10C, 10D, 10E, 11, 12A, 12B, 13, 14A, 14C, 14D, and 14E. Tax Map 9, Parcels 47J, 48C, and 49A. Tax Map 6, Parcels 1L, 1U, 1W, 1X, 1Y, 47K, 48B, 50A, and 69 in Moyoc Township.
Ms. Chairman, just.
Does he need to read that again? Did anybody miss a number?
Well, just for clarification, I think you said G3 to O3, I just want to clarify, it should be O2.
O2, I'm sorry.
It's just for record clarification.
Do you want me to read those numbers again?
Yeah, you want me to do it again?
No.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You do have a revised memo in the agenda, um, in front of the staff report. Uh, this particular revision was heard by the board on November 4th, and, uh, we needed to re-advertise, um, to meet Division of Coastal Management requirements, and so that's why it's back before this board. Uh, the board did approve the amendment at that time, and, uh, specifically changes to the density, um, maximums. Um, I'm just, I've just consolidated all the mainland, um, subareas here on your left, um, the Imagine Currytuck, the land use plan transect here across the top, and you can see there's some changes to the O2 reserved lands, which is similar to what was previously considered conservation. And, um, so there's a proposed amendment to that particular transect to allow, transect to allow up to .4 dwelling units per acre, and that's achieved in an ag zoning district with 60% lot coverage, it's permitted. But we did have some cases where ag lands have that O2 designation, and, um, we're, we're not able to achieve that .4 without firstly getting a land use plan amendment and then, um, applying for, uh, their subdivision per, um, special use permit. So that's the change there. Then you can see the other changes are in the G3 mixed-use centers. One of the other big things this land use plan amendment does is remove references to Currytuck Station master plan throughout the document. And you can see in the Moyoc subarea under the G3 mixed-use centers, we're striking reference to the Currytuck Station plan, as well as the up to 12 dwelling units per acre, and, um, making that consistent with the ordinance with up to three dwelling units per acre. Then in the Grandy subarea, as opposed to having specific standard for without sewer and sewer, the ordinance already speaks to, uh, sewer and some alternatives to sewer for different zoning districts, so, um, we're striking those two differences, and then it will just, um, be up to four dwelling units or as established in a civic master plan in the Grandy subarea. Then also in Grandy, in the G4 Village Centers, uh, we're also removing the differentiation between without sewer and with sewer, um, and having that consistent with, uh, the G3, which is up to four dwelling units per acre or as established in the civic master plan. And then in the Point Harbor subarea, uh, again, striking the without sewer and with sewer, and having up to three dwelling units per acre or as established in the civic master plan. So that's the changes to the densities. Then there's a change to the future land use map for the Currytuck Station area from G3, which is mixed-use centers and corridors, which is one of the most intense, um, transects. And you can see the front portion of the Currytuck Station area is going to retain the G3 classification, and it will transition as you go back towards, uh, Northwest Backwoods Road and down off of, uh, South Mills Road, um, from G2 to G2, and then G1. And then O2 is the areas that were previously, uh, similar to conservation. And just so you can see what, what that does to the zoning, you can see that the majority of this area is, is currently zoned agriculture, um, with some, um, various, uh, different zoning districts out near Keratok Highway. The, this amendment is consistent with land use goal one, to encourage development to occur at densities appropriate for their location, and land use policy 1.1, that the future land use map is a guide for decision-making, and should not be the sole basis for land use decisions. And the planning board and, uh, planning staff recommend approval of this request because it's, uh, in conformance with the ordinance, as well as the 2040 Vision Plan, land use goal one, and land use policy 1.1, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has at this time.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Turner?
Nope.
I do.
Okay.
So basically, this would increase density in lower Currytuck and decrease it in upper Currytuck.
Not necessarily, because you're going from the O2, going from one dwelling unit per three acres to one dwelling unit for 1.2 acres.
In one part.
If, up to .4 dwelling units per acre equals one dwelling unit per 1.2 acres.
Okay.
Versus one dwelling unit per three acres. So it's going to increase density in the O2 section.
Okay, so you are, you are increasing density in both areas. Is that what you're saying, Tony?
That's, is that correct, the way I'm reading that?
It is an increase in density with respect to the O2 transect of the land use plan and making that consistent with what's permitted in the agricultural zoning district with 60% open space. So it's going from .33, which is one dwelling unit per three acres, to .4, yes.
And what do the property owners think about changing the zoning or?
Not changing the zoning.
No, we're not changing.
Okay.
Are you talking about changing the future land use map?
Yes, yes.
Um, well, they're, I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, most of it's still, like you said, what's the percentage of, I mean, most of it's still pristine ag, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you can see here that the, the majority of the Currytuck Station area was zoned, is zoned ag agriculture.
Okay.
Which would be a low-density, single-family dwelling would be the most you would get.
Can you get back to the, the land use overlay?
This one?
Yep. So, everything in O2 is going to increase density. G3 is going to remain, no, G3 is going to go down, correct? Because we're going from three to.
You're going from G, so in this area on the land use plan, you're going from G3 down in the rear. So everything's decreasing in the rear.
Okay, okay.
As a maximum.
I, I guess my, my question is, what is the, the logic or the reason behind increase in the density in the O2 areas?
Because the ordinance allows in agriculture zone properties, the ordinance allows up to .4 dwelling units per acre with 60% open space in ag. But if you had ag property that had O2 land use plan designation, then you couldn't get the .4 with 60% open space, you could get .33 with 50% open space.
So it's just more consistent, is what you're saying?
It's more consistent, that part is more consistent.
Well, I mean, there's, so there's two sides to it, and we're choosing to change the one that increases density, instead of changing the UDO to reflect what the land use plan is, correct?
Correct.
What is this going to do as far as more dwellings? This change?
.33, .4.
Is this going to give us more dwellings?
It could.
It could, especially down county?
Um, I'm not sure about that.
This is not changing the UDO.
It doesn't, it doesn't change the ordinance.
This, all this is doing is making the land use plan and the UDO consistent, correct?
Right, with respect to the ag zoning district.
Right, and so as this board develops its policies for the UDO going forward, if we make a change to the UDO, then you could come back and amend this to match the UDO, which is how it would typically work.
And then, and then also, in the O2 land use plan transect, you may, that's where you may have some wetlands, which can't be included in a density calculation.
Take that out, yeah.
So it would only be pulling density off of the upland portions of O2. And I'm not sure if the board's familiar with Ashbrook Estates, it's a subdivision adjacent to the airport on, um, Maple Road, that was where, that was a case where the applicants came in and requested a land use plan amendment from O, um, O2 to G1.
Wait, that was approved, what, five months ago, six months ago?
Like that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So the reason that this has come before us tonight is because you were directed to do this by the former Board of Commissioners in June.
Correct.
Okay.
Like you said, Ms. Turner, far as the open space where they can't use the wetlands, and I know just like, I'm not going to say somebody's parcel or whatever, but I know somebody's parcel in the county that had 100-plus acres, with how we changed the wetlands, they lost a lot of the density, they lost a lot of all that, the, the ability to that too. So like you said, by making that change to the wetlands as well, because it can't be counted as open space, correct? The wetlands.
But wetlands can be counted as open space, can't be counted for density.
Density, yes.
You can't use it in the density calculations.
Yeah, so like I said, that parcel, just that parcel alone, I think, lost, if they tried to develop it, I think they lost, I was told, like, 30% of what they would have been able to do with the, the changes that we made on that stuff.
Possible, it's possible.
Jenny, could you just explain, um, to anyone who's Jenny, could you just explain to anyone who's listening who might be confused, what does it mean when you say established in a civic master plan?
That is a plan where there's several areas in the county, well, Currytuck Station would be an example of, of a civic master plan where an area was identified for development or to, to bring the community together to determine what types of development should go there and then have policies in place to develop in that manner. So it's a plan that's not yet been adopted or, or made.
Thank you.
Did, we used to call those small area plans?
Similar to small area plan, yeah.
Because I'm, I'm pretty sure as this board gets its feet under it, we're probably going to be doing some small area plans in different parts throughout the county after we hear input from our constituents. So I'm pretty sure that all of this is going to change in the next 12 months or is going to start the process soon to start looking at how we regulate the densities and the growth throughout the county. So they've, they've done one, we did one in Moyac. We've done one in Moyac, I know of, two times, may have been three times. And did we do, was one done out by the airport?
Maple Barco.
Yes.
Yeah, small area plan. And then we talked about doing one in Grandy, but I don't know if that was ever done.
It wasn't.
And we've talked about one at this side of the Bridge Terminus.
Yes, yes, as a planning tool for when the bridge comes.
Well, now, it's going to be delayed a little more.
The current land use plan has Grandy, Jarvisburg, I believe, at Currytuck Bridge Terminus as proposed areas for civic master plan.
Yeah.
So if we think it's going to change in the next year, do we need to do this at this time?
I'm going to have to ask staff, is this something that Kama?
That's my question.
Is this something that Kama is asking us to do?
No, this is something that we initiated, especially with respect to changing the map for Currytuck Station.
We being the former Board of Commissioners or staff?
Both, I mean, staff, we identified that this map needs to change for Currytuck Station since the board removed the Currytuck Station zoning districts in 2023.
Right.
But the map remains G3, which is your most intense transect. And as you can see from the zoning map, it's mostly ag. G3 could potentially support a rezoning. So we, we said, well, we probably need to take a look at this area of the map. And then when, in looking at some of the other densities with respect to sewer and without sewer, that was discussed with the board and, and some changes were agreed upon with respect to the maximum density in certain areas of the county. So currently, in the Grandy subarea, this land use plan is, this change is to say up to four dwelling units per acre whereas established in a civic master plan in the G3 mixed-use centers. The ordinance does not have any ability to get to four dwelling units per acre right now. The maximum the ordinance will get you to is three dwelling units per acre. And that's going to be with a rezoning. There's no straight zoning district that gets you three dwelling units per acre currently.
So why would we say up to four?
That was something that the board wanted to see, potentially additional densities in the Grandy areas.
So what practical effect is this amendment going to have? If we're, if it's adopted tonight, what happens tomorrow?
Well, if it's adopted tonight, um, well, the, the map will change. So you'll see, you won't have the G3 layer over the Currytuck Station area. Then with respect to the, the densities, if you, you can see what struck through. So Grandy currently says, and this is probably really good that you brought this up, Grandy currently says three to four dwelling units without sewer, six to 10 with sewer.
So you're dropping it down.
The board directed up to four, understanding that currently we don't really have the ability to get to four, but that could be something that could be discussed.
The UDO wouldn't, yeah, you can't get through it anyways.
So with my time on the Board of Commissioners, the land use plan and the UDO were supposed to be consistent. Somebody could come in under the land use plan and meet, so like this G3, what, what was the one that had the maximum, like 11 or 12 units?
Pretextation.
Yeah. So they could come in now under the land use plan as it's written now and apply for what the land use plan says is there?
Nope.
They cannot.
It's got to be consistent with both the land use plan and the ordinance. So the ordinance, the land use plan is your guide for decision-making.
Right.
But it also does limit density potentially.
Right.
The zoning is what drives what you can or can't do on a piece of property. So there's currently, since the zoning districts were removed for Currytuck Station, there's currently no zoning district to come in and request 12 dwelling units per acre in Moyac. Nor does the, because the ordinance doesn't allow that.
Okay.
So the most, most practical thing we can do, do tonight, in your opinion, then, is to approve this and get rid of that high-density G3 classification to stop and to prevent an argument for more density, like we just saw
Correct.
with these apartments.
And that's why we did away with Currytuck Station. We didn't want that to happen.
So this, this takes away that G3 and puts it to lower classifications to prevent that argument, correct?
In the rear, as well as takes the 12 dwelling units out of the land use plan.
Right. But what does it do for lower Currytuck?
For the O2.
Is it going to do the same thing?
You can look at the whole county too then.
Yeah.
But, but, yeah, I mean, lower Currytuck was, the Grandy area was designated in one of the studies as a potential growth area.
And right now you've got up to 10. This change caps it at four, but three is the practical result. For Grandy, so it, it's a win for Grandy.
Just a certain portion, if you look at Grandy, it's, it's just a small portion.
Okay. It's a win for the whole county.
It's taken down over all the densities.
Yes.
Yeah, let's just look at the Currytuck Station. That was 3,000 residential lots originally.
Dwelling units.
So what does this take it down to? Ballpark.
Will it be a third?
Yeah, so probably a thousand.
Thousand.
Thank you, Owen. That makes sense.
But that still could be with a rezoning, right?
Yeah.
So, but with the zoning that's in place currently, ag zoning, it's .33 with 50% open space or .4 with 60% open space, depending on which transect you're in, whether you're in G1, which is at the rear, or the O2.
Okay.
Thank you.
I got it. Okay. All right, any other questions? Is that it, Ms. Turner?
That is, thank you.
All right. I didn't, I didn't want to cut you short. Any commissioners have any other questions? Public hearing, no one has signed up. Does anyone wish to speak? Yep.
Good evening and congratulations and good luck with everything. I'm Connie Hedrick. I reside at 296 Summit Forum Trail. I'm not as prepared as I should be on this item. I didn't really realize it was coming here. But if you're going to revamp it and you want to minimize it, one of the key components is whether or not you have water and sewage available to the number of dwelling units per acre. Is that correct, staff? So when we have G3, we still have, as proposed, a maximum of three dwelling units per acre. And that is with, with sewage and water or without sewage and water. So if we're not going to do Currytuck Station, why don't we remove it to a G2 and more of a whole ag? And then we take the whole proposed as you guys get your feet under you, then that way you have less than two dwelling units. So that means you've got two apartments per acre versus what we just had on the G3 with the six dwelling units that were on the 22 acres, which gave us 11.4 density. I'm sorry, I, I wasn't really as prepared as I should be. But, so why can't you move that G3, eliminate it altogether? To G2 and the lower ag? And then kind of come back with what the town says we need, what our mixed use needs to look like. So that way we don't have a continued G3 out there with three dwelling units. That could be three apartments per acre, because you've got water and sewage. So I'm just saying, really investigate. If you're going to change it and make it agriculture and less density, 1,000 units is great, but if one dwelling unit can house, six can house 252 apartments on a G3, we're not doing too well. So just thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right.
Can I get Jenny to, to clarify something?
Yes, you may.
Jenny, can you just clarify that when it's zoned ag, there's not three dwelling units per acre, correct?
That's correct, yes.
It's one, basically per three acres is what ag is, pretty much.
Pretty much, yeah, or .4.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion from the board.
Close the public hearing first.
Sorry, at this point, I'd like to close the public hearing and now ask for a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I hereby move to approve and adopt by resolution PB 2421, Imagine Currytuck 2040 Vision Plan Amendment because it is in conformance with the Unified Development Ordinance and the Imagine Currytuck 2040 Vision Plan, G3 mixed-use centers and corridors, G2 controlled growth, G1 low-density growth and O2 reserved land transect profiles as well as land use goal one and land use policy 1.1.
A second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're going into
Do we have like a five-minute recess? Five minutes?
Let's finish it.
Okay, never mind, finish it.
Yeah.
Do what?
I was thinking we have like a five-minute recess restroom break.
Yeah, we, we're going to have one in just a minute. New business, resolution acknowledging receipt of state-directed funds for Moyac Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant. Is that you?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So before you, this evening you have a resolution acknowledging receipt of state-directed funds. These were funds that were originally received from the Department of Environmental Quality through the 2023 Appropriations Act from the General Assembly. The initial appropriation was $10 million for Moyac Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant and $6 million for Maylin Water Treatment Plant. And then there was a technical corrections bill that was issued that allowed us to use the entire appropriation for water or sewer infrastructure. So tonight you have the resolution acknowledging receipt of a grant in the amount of $13,762,000. This is the estimated project cost. So that means we have additional funds that we can use either for Moyac Regional once we get the contract price or funds that can be appropriated for another wastewater project or water infrastructure project.
Didn't Senator Haney help with that?
He absolutely did.
He helped to get that changed for us so we could use it any way we wanted to now, so for that, so.
That's correct.
As we would have, yeah, so that was a good, he did a good job there.
Questions for the manager? I have one. What is the status? The date, the sewer system will be replaced, repaired? I get people ask me and I really don't know how to answer.
Okay. So the mobile plant was installed and operational at the end of August. We've had two months' worth of sampling. We still have one permit limit that we are working to, to get within the permit parameters. Once we do that, the plant will be compliant, at which point we'll have several months where we'll have to be compliant before we can start adding users to the system. We estimate that there is about 25,000 gallons per day of capacity available once the plant is compliant. And we're working through the, the contract process right now with the, the firm that's the design builder for the project. So I don't have any definite dates for you, but it's, it's coming.
Okay. All right.
Hopefully if it's compliant, we can just go ahead and add another module out there.
Yes.
Yeah, that was the thing, these, these mobile units, we can keep adding to it to get capacity. It makes it, it was cheaper that way too, and we get more capacity instead of a permanent plant.
And it was easier to work on, too.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? I guess we need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And number two, resolution prohibiting viewing of pornography on county networks and devices.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I know this is kind of an odd, odd duck. This is before you tonight because the General Assembly enacted session law 2024-26, which required all public agencies, which does include Currytuck County, to have a policy that strictly prohibits the viewing of pornography on county networks and devices. There are certain exceptions that are carved out in the statute. For example, if there's law enforcement investigating something, there are several exceptions listed out. We are required to adopt this prior to January of 2025. Also, if there are any, any, anything saved on any county networks or devices, they have to be deleted by that date. And there's also kind of an interesting provision. The clerk to the board has to report every year to the state chief information officer any violations that occur. So this is just something that we're required to do by the state. So I would recommend approval tonight.
Can I ask one question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you've got one first.
I was just going to say, the, the public's been like, what's going on? What's going on?
I'm sure they have.
It's not that we have a problem, it's that the state has mandated all counties, all 100 counties, adopt this ordinance.
That's correct.
Okay.
As far as the exemption and as, obviously as a captain at sheriff's office, we have, we have one designated computer, one certain line for where we have cases that our investigators have to investigate, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that would be an exception.
Like I said, so they would fall under the exception. And I know we have our own computer, one computer just for that, for
That's correct.
for everything. Like I said, nobody uses their county computer. We have one and as well as the line for it. So it's, so that, I just was making sure that that is, falls under for when they have to investigate, which is unfortunate, but it's
Yes, if you look in the number three of the resolution, it refers to North Carolina General Statute 143-805D. And within that, it lists the exceptions. And number one is investigating or prosecuting crimes. Then you have identifying potential security or cybersecurity threats, protecting human life. It lists, it's a pretty long list of exceptions, but that's number one.
Okay, thank you.
Their computers have a firewall anyways.
They do, there's so many protections, yes.
The counties, like if you have a county cell phone, far as, it's the same thing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I want to move for approval.
Have a motion for approval, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Motion for approval, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, I'm going to recess our regular meeting and ask that we reconvene as the Tourism Development Authority.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right.
All right, so this evening, on the Tourism Development Authority agenda is just a single budget amendment for your approval.
All right.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion for approval.
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'd like a motion to adjourn the Tourism Development Authority and reconvene in our regular meeting. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, we're back in our regular meeting. And work session, review of commissioner's service on boards and commissions. I think everybody got a list of the boards that were available, that some commissioners, the ones that have, have left the board, those are open. And some that are on the board right now may wish to go on to a different board. I don't know. I have no preference. I'll be happy to take the Social Services and Senior Center Board, unless somebody else strongly feels that way.
I, I wanted Social Services, but
Well, you can have Well, you can have Social Services.
Reason being with the, the children and for all my years of teaching, that was just one I was interested in. It's not that I have to be on it.
I'm on like three boards of Social Services now, so I'm good. I don't need it anymore.
I am perfectly fine. Where's the list?
I got it pulled up right here.
It's the last page.
Page 71.
Yeah, it's the very last page.
Well, I'm a senior, so I will take the Senior Citizen Board.
Ooh.
And you, aren't you also going to take the local emergency plans?
Yes, I wanted, I, I currently have that one, and I, and I'd like to offer that up to the chairman.
I'll take those two boards, but somebody needs to keep score, so we make sure we have every
Which one did, which one did you just say you would take, Paul, after senior citizens?
The local emergency, thus currently I'm on that board there.
Let's start at the top.
All right, start with Commissioner Beaumont.
Beaumont was Fire and EMS Advisory Board.
I have graciously, I was requested by multiple firemen to have a cop on their board. That's kind of crazy, but I volunteered where I will do the, the FEAB.
All right, Tourism Advisory Board.
I would like that one, be in District 1.
Okay. Owen, you're on Almaral Commission, the Almaral Rural Planning Organization alternate. Would you like to be the?
Yeah, I can do that and
And Almaral Regional Solid Waste.
I wouldn't mind going back on the ABC board.
Well, I think I got some interest in that too, just because I was previous on the ABC board and I saw through the construction, it's in my backyard, and I kind of know what's going on in there. I mean, I was, that's why I was going to drop the local and just pick up that one. Continue on where I was working in there.
Here we go.
It's our dominant too, so.
Yeah.
Here we go, we have our first differences.
What's that?
I made a joke, I said we have our first differences. Y'all can fight it out in the octagon.
Okay, we're going to skip that one for right now. And Senior Citizen Advisory Board and Social Services taken care of. Ms. Jarvis is on College of the Almaral Board of Trustees, Juvenile Crime Prevention and Opioid Advisory.
I request to stay on those three, please. And I don't see opioid advisory on here.
It is, it's the third one under my name.
Oh, I only have two under your name.
Oh.
That one's a new addition.
Got the old list.
This is page 71.
Girl ass need to know, baby.
All right, and then Kevin McCord is on Animal Services and Control Advisory Board, Recreation Advisory Board, Trillium Health, and now on Fire and EMS.
I'm going to, I'm going to take the recreation.
You're going to take recreation.
He's got kids playing sports in the county now, mine are older.
Okay, recreation.
I'm going to stay on the Animal Services.
And Trillium Health.
If somebody wants the Trillium Health, I've got, I've done four years on it.
What's another year?
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah.
I'll stay on it, let's, I mean Janet, how many boards is Janet, how many do you have, one or two?
I'm okay, I've got one right now.
All right, I'll, I'll take one for the team. I'll stay on it.
All right, and then on
Selena, what was that looked for?
Mike Payment is Almaral Regional Health Services, Extension Advisory and Local Emergency Management Planning, which I've taken.
Right, so, and the extension really just meets maybe quarterly or something. That was a new one, but, but yeah, that's why I just really have one I go to. That's why I wanted to pick up the, the, I had interest in the ABC board. Just like I said, it's like, it's a minute from my house where I'd meet, and I was active on the current issues with the current, the ABC board, so that was my
That's the only board that's not spoken for, so you gentlemen need to work that out or flip a coin.
Paper, rock, scissors, you know?
And I, I don't mind picking up another one. I mean, I hate to only have one and some of you all have three.
Well, you should take Trillium then. Kevin would really appreciate that.
Selena, I'm sending you a Christmas card just on that note. No, it's not bad. The Trillium, Bobby Lowe is the local, she's the director. She's awesome. I mean, if you want it, you can have it. If you don't, I will stay on it. I mean, it, it meets quarterly. Selena did it. I've done it for four years. She did it for two years.
I, I don't mind doing, you know, I feel bad only having one and some of y'all had three in mine, so.
You should take Trillium.
Okay.
Take Trillium.
Selena, I'm buying you a gift now.
Now, we're still back to the ABC board.
Well, how many does Owen have and how many does Mike have?
We've got two.
And Mike's got two.
Mike's got two.
Mike has two?
Wait, does, oh, you were doing local emergency.
I am, so that takes Mike down to two.
And the Extension Advisory Council, I think they changed that, that was with, um,
Oh, wait, yeah, Owen's got
Yeah, that's with extensions over there, Cameron, so.
All right, Owen, you have three, Almaral Commission, Rural Planning Organization, and Almaral Regional Waste.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I'll take the alternate for Almaral Rural Planning Organization. That'll give me two, and then Mike and Owen, y'all still got to figure out
He can do the ABC board.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Owen.
So is that all of them?
Yes, that's all up in there.
Okay, so how about reading them out and let's do it as a motion and make it official?
Okay, starting with you, Mr. Chair, you'll be on the Senior Citizen Advisory Board and the Local Emergency Planning Committee and the ARPO Alternate. Owen will be on the Almaral Commission. He is the representative for the Almaral Rural Planning Organization and with the Almaral Regional Solid Waste. Kevin is now on FEAB and Animal Services. Mike is going to continue on Almaral Regional Health and the Extension Advisory Council and the ABC Board. Tony will take Tourism Advisory Board, Parks and Rec. Janet will be taking Trillium and Senior Services, and I will remain on the COA Board, JCPC and the Opioid Advisory Board.
Ms., Ms. Jarvis, I believe, or Commissioner Vice Chair Jarvis, sorry. I think she's DSS and Janet was DSS, yeah, he, Paul took, you took senior, correct?
Took senior and she took DSS.
So she's DSS and
All right, sorry about that, DSS. I, I have a question about a couple more advisory boards. We don't have them. Has the board ever thought of having like a Currytuck Sound slash Commercial Fishing Advisory Board?
We're going to be talking about that in the near future.
And how about a farming board? Made up of farmers? Have we ever had an advisory board for farming?
I don't think so.
No, we do have
Well, I mean, a lot of that would be With the game, with the extension.
We do have the game commission too, which that's a
Game commission, but we don't have a commissioner on the game.
No commissioners on that.
We certainly can look at adding other boards after we discuss it, and they need to have a mission that, that they understand what they're there for, and, and we can certainly discuss having some other boards.
And what about, what about soil and water? I know we have people that are elected. Is that it? Are there, there's no advisory board for that?
They have an advisory board, don't they?
Yeah.
They have the three of them, but they have different, don't they have a different person for the districts?
For the different water district?
Yeah, the watershed.
Stormwater.
Yeah, they have, they have boards for some of that. Or not boards, they have, they have a person.
No, we have it under the drainage.
Right.
That's what it was.
Right. And, and we also need to, we need to have a discussion about Economic Development Board. We used to have one for years, and so that's something else for a future discussion. I mean, we need to figure out where we want to go and make sure people have direction if we're going to create boards and put people on there. So I think that's a very important board for us to
Work session, yeah, we can
Yeah, we can have a work session. As a matter of fact, the, the gentleman that runs the State Economic Development, last name is Chung. I can't, can't remember his first name. But I talked with him about coming to Currytuck and meeting with us and us developing a relationship with the State Economic Development Board because they have people that contact them from time to time, looking for a place to put a business. Well, we're so close to Hampton Roads and the port, we should really be up high on their radar screen. So that's a good discussion for a work session going forward.
But keep in mind that you're on these boards as a liaison, not to be the decider of anything that they have going on.
And you can bring the feedback from
Correct.
the board that you're on to what's going on with Parks and Rec or whatever, you know?
Right. All right, so we've got this all together, and are you putting that out as a motion?
Sure, I make a motion that we change the advisory boards as read.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Janet, do you have something else?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn our regular meeting, could I ask that we have discussion on our second meeting in December?
Yes, sir, you may.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I am going to be out of the country that day, and I'm not sure if anybody else is, but I would ask that we do away with the second meeting in December. I'm close to the holidays too, and I think there's going to be a lot of people traveling, but that's, and I won't be here, so.
Well, that's been the practice when I was on the board, that you didn't have a second meeting in December, but that's certainly up to the board to make their decision.
Are you making that as a motion?
I mean, I didn't know if there's any more comments about that, so.
I was going to ask, is there anything pressing that needs to be done, the second meeting of December?
I believe there is one planning item that's tracking to the second meeting.
Okay, I know we had talked about, it's something with the advis, opioid advisory board.
That's correct.
Would that be okay to wait to the first meeting in January, or will that complicate things?
It just delays it, I mean, you know.
So it won't complicate things?
I don't know that it will complicate it. No, it just delays the, the process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Does the planning item have to be heard? It cannot wait till January? Are you planning folks left?
I would think, I would assume it can be heard later.
It can be heard later. Do we need a motion?
It'll be January 6th.
Yeah, I mean, it can, it can be delayed. It's not, I don't think it's required to be heard on that day. I don't, I wish the planning department was still here, but I don't see.
The meeting wasn't over, so they shouldn't
They should have planned better.
That's right. They should have stayed.
Oh, listen to him. That was sharp.
So are you making that as a motion, Mr. Payment?
I don't know if we need a motion. I think the chair can just make the decision to, to cancel the second meeting. I thought we have in the past, but if we need a motion
We, we, can we wait and check with our, our planning staff and then
Yes.
That's a good idea.
Then ask them, okay, that's fine.
But I think you see what the sentiment of the board is. So, all right, anything else? Just say thanks, everybody, for being here tonight and
Getting ready to kick off the new year.
Doing your job, and that'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed can stack.